All right, why don't we go ahead and get started?
You can do it in alphabetical order.
So, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Russ?
Lisa Hadeen.
Here.
Scott Gergen.
Here.
Dave Pembel.
Here.
Kelsey Waits.
Here.
Russ Roloff, here. Yeah, sorry. Joe Becker. And Superintendent Collins.
Yeah.
It's a group effort.
All right, thanks.
Off script.
Thank you. I would like a motion and a second to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I do just have one discussion I had wanted to discuss, the process with pay equity, and I don't know if that needs to be a separate bullet or if we can talk about that down below.
Down below.
Just in case.
Okay. Any other discussion points about tonight's agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number three, I would like a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the September 18th, 2019 regular board meeting and the September 27th, 2019 special board meeting, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on these items? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number four, I would like a motion and a second to approve the bills payable, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Besides the Mankato special, paying the bills? Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I would like a motion and a second to approve the charitable donations for the first quarter, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I was just scanning them. We have a little over $88,000 for the first quarter of the school, or the first quarter, which is July through September 2019. So, thank you to the individuals, to the associations, to the businesses that are donating to the schools. Thank you very, very much.
Yeah, and the substantive amount of that was the Hastings Public Schools Foundation What If Grants were received in the first quarter, and that's just a tremendous program.
Yeah. Fantastic. Very supportive community.
And the innovations in our district.
All right. I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number five, good news. Tim?
Yeah, Molly couldn't be with us this evening, but just outstanding recognition from Molly Sorillo because we're on television. Very honored to let you know that she was presented with the state social worker for the year. So when you're the state champ, that's pretty good. And we've known that in the work that she's done for us. She's got a conference that she'll be recognized, and maybe it's already happened. I know it was in October that she's being recognized, but I knew that she couldn't be here tonight, but at least I wanted to give recognition to her. And she represents the Hastings School District and Hastings community very well, so congrats to her. Then, a couple weeks ago, I was invited to Mankato in the evening for a presentation and recognition as for the Hastings School District as the small metro employer of the year by the Minnesota Rehabilitation Association Job Placement for individuals and persons with disabilities. And so it was a surprising recognition, and really they gave kudos to Deanna. They said that their constant communication with her and flexibility in helping set up these, the job placement and working with the job coaches, that it's really appreciated when they call and that she'll connect with them. And so I was very honored on behalf of the Hastings Public School District, there were two schools in the state of Minnesota that received, or two employers. We were the only school. So, that's pretty good recognition. So, I had not heard about it before, but probably about 200 people in attendance and just a great program. And I was able to hear a lot of great stories about things that are happening from businesses across the area that are working with students on this job coaching and job placement. So, very enjoyable night, and I was glad to represent Hastings. That's great news for our school district as well.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thanks, Tim. All right, I think this should be, in the paper agenda, this should be item number six, the superintendent's report.
Yeah, the budget review cap, this could really be under good news as well. This review is for the school year that we just finished. So, as the auditors have been in here in July, and they've met with Jen and talked through where our budget finished for the 2019-2020 school year, I know that it's going to be placed up on the screen there for those in the audience to see and for you to see as well. But we finished about $900,000 above where our projections were, which is great news. And, you know, when you're dealing with a multimillion dollar budget, you're always guessing and making projections at where things are coming in, and so I'm just going to walk through some of them. It's much easier to be sitting here tonight talking about projections that came into the positive rather than the negative. So, we'll just walk through some of them. The total for teaching and subs, you're always guessing as a district, how many of your subs will we need who will get sick. One of the things that happens there is if a teacher, and we had a couple of them, goes on long-term disability, then your costs aren't as much because the long-term disability helps to pay for the cost of the sub. And unfortunately, we had some of those situations this past year, so that helped that part of the budget. The total other and subs, probably not good news, but we just couldn't fill some positions. So, some of our maintenance positions we couldn't fill for a while. Some of our pair positions, difficult. So, you're guessing on that amount of transition, so that's $87,000 to the good. Another big one in there then ties into the benefits, so if you can't fill positions, you're not having as much health insurance and dental insurance. And also, you're guessing at how many of your teachers, new teachers specifically, new staff hired, are they going to be on family health, are they going to be on single health? And so this year, it was, that part of it was to a positive, too, where more of them were on single health insurance than family health insurance, so that came $180,000. So, overall, on the expense side, we were $364,000 to the good. Really, down in the finance side, the big one on why we were so much to the good was our special ed. A lot of that had to do with transportation, the more efficiency in the transportation, but quite honestly, two nine days of snow days on the special ed side for transportation really helps a lot because in many cases, those routes are single student routes. And so, it would be a combination of, did we have as many students and programs, a little bit less on that. But really, the big one there was the efficiency in the transportation routes and nine days of no school. So that's a big ticket item. And then down below, on the revenue side, taxes and credits, general ed aid. The general ed aid ties into, you're guessing what your enrollment is going to be, you know, a year in advance, and our enrollment was down a little bit off of what our projections were, so then that's $124,000 to the red. But then the interest rates and our investments did pretty good because last year the interest rate spiked up a little bit, and now they're starting to go down on how we can invest as a school district. But what are we at right now about, and Jen handles all the investing for the school district. What are we at, about 1.95 right now, or?
Some of it were at 2.2.
Okay.
It's starting to go down.
And we just came out of a self-funded health insurance meeting, too, where Jen shared with, I know Lisa and Scott were on that committee, where we're able now to start investing in our self-funded health insurance a little bit. And even a million dollars at, you know, 1.9 or 2% interest, that's definitely going to help that as well. So, overall, really, really good news for the district. As I talked with you as board, I think the good news moving forward with the interim superintendent and the new superintendent is that there should not be any budget reductions coming up in the spring, and that's a good thing for the school district not to have to go through that process. So, really good news.
Awesome.
And when our auditors come in November, you'll hear some of the same from him. All right?
Great. Thank you.
I think it wasn't on the agenda underneath the superintendent report, but I just thought of it. I don't know, Scott and Lisa, we came out of the self-funded health insurance committee meeting, that's, health insurance, as you know, is a big part of our budget. Scott and Lisa are the representatives that sit on that. I think, and I'll share just a little bit, but you guys feel free to hop in. Again, when we chose to go into self-funded now four to five years ago, there's a little bit of a risk because you want to be healthy when you hop into that self-funded health insurance, and we were. Right now, our target goal was to have it around about 2.2 million in reserve, so that we never had to really raise our rates that much, and right now we've been able to build it up to around 4 million.
4.6, I think it was.
About 4.6 million. And we're seeing now, this year, there's some higher trends of claims, which means we know that our cost is going to go up a little bit. And we've seen that pattern over the last two to three years, but there's a bigger spike this year, and that just ties back to employee situations where you have high usage, and of course, we all know the pharmacy issue of what drugs you're on, if they're high-cost drugs or not, that can impact our pool as well. But still, all in all, when we have 4.6 million as a district, our committee now is going to have to make a recommendation. And our committee is made up of principal, three to four teachers, secretary, Jen, myself, two board members. Our committee will at some point make a recommendation in April or May to the board of whether or not we should raise it or not, and we all believe that we probably will not be raising it because we do have a little bit to dip down to. But Scott and Lisa, do you want to add anymore?
Just one thing that I've noticed, I've been on that committee for a number of years now, actually since the inception of it, and we've moved past the worry of, are we going to be okay, you know, do we have enough reserve? And more into the, what small program, like today, we talked about a number, a couple of different small programs, what can we add at very low cost that will help our members be more healthy? That will help them find where to go, to which pharmacy they can go to and receive the drug at the lowest rate, which helps everyone. So, I'm just so impressed with that, that that committee is not only talking about it in this room, but they're also taking that out to the membership and really helping drive that home with them. You know, things such as teledoc appointments versus going into the office. So, just, it's all good news.
What's the numbers been like the last couple of years? Are we seeing a lot of increase in family coverage versus single coverage, or is it pretty stable? Are we pretty?
We're pretty even on that. It's almost 50/50.
Really, that's, it really is, okay.
Yeah. And as far as...
And our enrollment numbers are...
Yeah, enrollment numbers are...
Virtually unchanged.
Yeah.
You know, a handful.
Four.
Really, you know, a handful each year that shift up and down.
Well, 400, 400-plus policy numbers, and, you know, that translates into directionally about 1,500, you know, total persons that are covered.
Yeah.
I think one of the wisest decisions that the committee made was to hire, through the recommendation of George, was to hire the analytics person. And so this person can dig into all the data. They can't see names, but they can see where our hire costs are coming from, so then our group can talk about whether or not we want to educate on that issue or not. So it's been really good to see.
Right.
Get a little projections, like where you're kind of going.
Yeah, it's not even react. It's, there are reactive analytics there, but it's also predictive analytics that are saying, hey, we have X number of people that may be on a path to some type of joint replacement. So you may want, you know, just to keep this in mind, and we talked about that today, that there are ways to drive, or to give the members options on where they would go have that done. You know, you could go do that at Summit Orthopedics, you could go do that at Tria, you could do that at the University of Minnesota. Which one of those is going to, you know, have the best outcome and also be at the best cost for the plan? And you can have that...
You can provide that information proactively to people so that you are making an informed healthcare decision.
Right. Not to the, I mean, again, we have no idea. There's no names, there's no identifying information, but you can give it to the group.
To the group served.
Yeah.
And you can identify gaps that then we can target wellness issues around. Say, oh, we're not seeing the kind of activity we would expect in this one area.
Right.
You know, maybe we should encourage dental checkups.
Right.
Just re-remind people that that's the thing that we cover, and it's a good idea to do, and, you know, so that we can target wellness towards that.
The wellness program is well-received and taken to heart, right?
It is, and it's expanding. I mean, with what we talked about tonight, it's even expanding. I mean, there's all types of...
Technology to help.
Yeah, different technology to help people, you know, you go through a screening, you can qualify for this technology. They give you, you know, additional tools to help you manage, you know, perhaps you're prediabetic, perhaps you're, you know, all these types of things. It's great. They have a big focus on the wellness, you know, let's focus on wellness, let's focus on the preventative, because that's a lot cheaper than focusing on, than reacting to a resulting injury or a resulting disease or a resulting chronic issue.
But as a school board, it's definitely a committee that you always want to get an update on for years to come, because it is one of the high-cost items for a school district. So you want to make sure that your board keeps coming back and updating you on the direction that that is going.
Yeah. Yeah, so the next steps that we had, the big next step that we had coming out of today's meeting was around five-year projections, because we are in a position where we are in a surplus, okay? And we're always hopefully going to be in a surplus position, that's, but our surplus is even above where, you know, the benchmark of where we think we should be. So we look at it, okay, based on trend, you know, we can play some what-if scenarios with that and say, okay, what does this look like if we have 0% increase for two years and then in the third year we do a 1%, you know, how does this track out if we see healthcare costs trending at 6.5%? And it'll forecast that out for us so that we can make some good decisions. Because what we're trying to do, the whole idea behind the self-funded is that you're in control of this yourself, so we're trying to smooth that curve. We don't want it to be a 0% increase one year and a 9% increase the next. You know, you want to smooth that out a little bit and not have surprises for your membership.
Yeah, much in the same way that we approach the five-year projection for the district's budget. Where you say, yeah, we have a reserve, it's above our...
Set goal.
Our set goal, but we want to find a place where we, you know, sort of plain into the right place. You kind of come in and you taper.
That's a great point.
We want to taper into, where's the balance between spending down and then making organizational changes? So...
That's great.
I sort of thought about it the same way. I'm like, okay, good, we're going to get that data, we're going to be able to have that really meaningful discussion at a time when it's not driven by need, when we can just discuss, how would we like this to be? We can have a values-based discussion about, how do we want this to look?
That's what I was asking about the wellness program, you know, the value of how many the employees take to heart the wellness program, because if you are striving in a program that people are getting and they're making good choices for their health, that improves the bottom line all the way around.
Right.
Awesome. All right, I think we're into our action items here. So, item number one, I would like a motion and a second to approve accepting a donation of 56 acres of land to Independent School District 200. So, we need the motion and a second. I know we have more to say about this.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, and thank you. I'd like to open it up for discussion, please.
Yeah, this would be under the great, great news section, and we as a board have known about this. I wrote it very generically, because at the time that the agenda was coming out, I still wasn't sure if we were going to be able to act on it tonight. But just what a generous, great gift to our school district, to our community, not only to our students, but also to the entire area. Some of you knew about this land better than I did. You knew what a prize it was, but maybe about four to five months ago, I was approached by an attorney from town and a gentleman representing the fund for Tekla Carpen, who had passed away in 2017. And they wanted her fund to purchase this property and to give it to the school district. And at first I was like, this is just too good to be true. What's the catch here? You know, wow, what a gift. And we sat down and talked about it, and I got to learn more about Tekla Carpen. And she was just a great enthusiast for nature preservation along the Mississippi River. She was an associate professor at Mankato State University, back when it was Mankato State University, and she came back to live in the Hastings community where she grew up and had lived here since 1974. I think that they, I give huge kudos to Joe Beatty and his wife. They were very good friends with Tekla. Tekla saw the passion that Joe Beatty gave to this community and to our students on field biology and all the time that he put back into the Vermilion watershed area and just the preserve, you know, just all that he does for the nature preservation. So I give huge kudos to Joe Beatty, our teacher, and I really believe that that was another reason why they chose to give it to the Hastings School District. As board members who have sat on the facilities committee, you know a little bit more about this, but the fact that it is in CRP, will get about $8,900 a year until that CRP ends. I think that's around 2022, 2023. We're going to be responsible for the county as they look to continue to preserve it, but a lot of the work's been done. A lot of the heavy work has been done by the Staffel family. Also want to give huge kudos to them as they have helped preserve it, and they said to us that as we get requirements, whether it be to mow grass or whether we have to do a controlled burn, they're going to help us out. They joked about, they remember the time when they used to be able to do controlled burns with high school students. I said, no, we won't be doing that in the future, but I appreciate getting out there and getting dirty. But just to seed it by hand and some of the other things that are going to have to happen. Al Singer has been very good to work with for the county. He knows Joe Beatty very well. A group of teachers, myself, Paul Baker, Joe Beatty, we met with them, because somebody within the school is going to have to be the connection as well for this property. I know that Joe Beatty and Paul Baker, principal at Pinecrest Elementary, they're very eager to step up and help out. And I told you as a board that the county would like a small gravel parking lot built somewhere on the property so that families can go out, anybody driving in the area. I found out that it is a huge birdwatching area. I never knew that. And to see the excitement from Joe Beatty and Paul Baker, people who know this land and they've been out there, and Paul Baker has about 100 photos from being out there of all the wildlife that's out there. Just really, really excited about it. We will have to come up with a naming. It does have to be named in honor of respect to her donation, and we'll pay for the signage and put it up, et cetera. So, at some point, a committee will work with Al about, you know, is it the Tekla Carpen Nature Preserve? I don't know, whatever it might be, but definitely want to do that. And we said that we would agree to keep that signage erected and in good shape for years and years to come. So, now some of our students will be able to work with the county on developing it even further, some walking trails, some learning stations, and so that's going to be exciting for some of our students as they're going to get to be able to walk and talk of how to develop a nature preserve. Of course, they don't want it overdeveloped because they want it to keep it the way it is. So, if the district would want to sell it down the road, they could. There's nothing prohibiting the district from selling it down the road.
But it would need to remain...
It would always need to remain in the name, and it would always have to remain as a...
Preserve.
Preserve.
Right.
So, I don't think a school board would have any intention of doing that, but that's just something to let you know as a board as well. So, yeah, just really, just a tremendous gift and somebody from this community who really gave back to the community and really gave back to our students and our school district as well.
Excellent. Just a note, obviously, thank you to Tekla Carpen, but thank you to...
Greg.
To Wally and Greg Staffel, who are childhood, their family farm and our family farm were next to each other. So thank you to them for being such good stewards of the land and for helping facilitate this. Thank you to the Vermilion Township Board, because this had to be approved through them before we could act upon it. So thank you to them as well for helping us facilitate this transfer. It's wonderful. It's really great news.
What an amazing opportunity.
Yeah. What a gift. It really is.
This would be really neat.
Yeah.
Tim, if the community wanted to see on the website where this is, is there something on the website?
Not yet, because I had to keep it secret until...
Until township approval.
But no, that's, yeah, we've got, we've got...
Something up on the website.
We've got photos, we've got the easement, we've got things that have been done, we've got a lot of that, and Al Singer, he can send a lot of that to us electronically, and so we'll get that up on our website.
Okay, cool.
All right, so getting us back to the business of this motion. I have a motion, I have a second. Is there any other discussion at this point? All right, seeing no discussion, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action item number two, a motion to approve the designation of identified officials with authority for the MDE external user access recertification system as follows. Tim Collins to act as the identified official with authority, which is the IOWA, and Missy Williams to act as the IOWA to add and remove names only for Hastings Public School District 200. I need a motion and a second for that, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I think we can open this up for discussion and probably more of an explanation of exactly what this means.
Simply a requirement that MDE knows who has that authority, so it's just really that the board has to act on the two officials. That's simple.
Okay. Simple question, what happens on January 1, and then what happens on July 1? We will have to probably reach out to them and change this.
That is a great question, and I don't have a great answer.
I bet we can proactively reach out to MDE and change it.
Yeah. So, Deanna will note that in January to change.
Other discussion? Okay, I'll call this for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action item number three, I would like a motion and a second to approve the second reading of the following policies. Policy 404 on background checks, policy 412, travel and related expenses, policy number 430, staff recognition, and policy 706, school board acceptance of gifts.
A motion.
Second.
Thank you. Open this up for discussion.
Well, you better approve 706 because we just accepted a big deal.
We certainly did.
But no, we went through these already on reading number one. The policy committee has reviewed them. We reviewed them at our last board meeting, and there were no big...
There's no major changes.
No major changes.
Okay, and for those interested, these are available on the school district website. All of our policies are out there for the community to peruse as they would like. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call this for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action item number four, I would like a motion and a second to approve the following change order. Change order number three, which impacts our McNamara Field and building grounds in the amount of $24,461.12. This is an addition. Change order number four, again with McNamara Field and the surrounding buildings in the amount of $29,921.21. This is a potential addition. Change order number five, which is part of the Hastings Middle School improvements in the amount of $51,150. This is a potential addition. And change order number six for Hastings Middle School improvements again. And this one is in the amount of $106,272. And this is a potential addition. I need that motion and a second and then we can open it up for discussion.
Our motion.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Discussion on this, please.
This is one of the things that's always difficult for board members because these items have already been done. And as you understand, in the construction process, they need to know like right then of whether or not they're going to do some of these. And so it's our representatives, whether it be Joel Haas, Jim Huberty, Trent Hanson, whoever it might be on these projects, they're, they're, they're talking and they're saying, yeah, we're going to move forward with that. And I trust their, their judgment. I trust their decision making. All those individuals are fiscally conservative as well. Just to give you, in an email, I shared some of the, the change orders. But for example, number three, they needed to add a roof soffit to match the other roof soffit on the concession stand. They had, they decided to wood cover the trusses on the inside of the concession stand for exposure. And then there needed to be extra bracing on the walls of the concession stand. So that made up a majority of the $24,000. The $29,000, they had to add extra fencing and build a little bit extra wall around the lift. There's a gate revision there. I think that down the road, Wold is going to be paying us back as.
For that.
Yeah. It looks like an add now, but I think they're just going to flat out write us a check for that because they, they admitted that that was their, their mistake. And then there was the removal of seven toilets, replacement of toilets and plumbing that they hadn't projected when they got into it. And that made up most of that one. The middle school improvements, one of it was they couldn't get the HVAC into the building where they needed to get it. So they had to blow a hole through the wall somewhere to move the HVAC mechanical in. And so they chose a louver area. And when they chose that louver area and started to bust into it, they found out that it was supporting a cement beam that was holding up some flooring. So then they had to bring in extra bracing to support that cement beam that wasn't in the, the plans after they already, the hole. Well, that was the only place where the HVAC could go in. So that, that, that was an extra cost. Some increased piping for heating and then a thickening of the chiller pad according to code with the chiller. So that was a major portion of that. And then the, I think about $86,000 to $87,000 of the other Hastings Middle School one was data lines and telephone lines that didn't meet code once they got up in there. And that wasn't projected. So that's a big item. But when you get into it, that's what you find. I, I've invited Wold to the November 5th or 6th, or the work session in November. And they're going to go through then where we're at, at the middle school with the budget. And they're going to go through a variety of facility options for you as a board to be thinking about. Once we do know in February and March, how much money we do have left over from the bond project, which we are projecting at about $2 million. And of course, the want need list is bigger than the, the money list. But at least we're going to knock the dust off some of the discussion from our facility committees from two years ago.
And see where we can go.
We're going to revisit the security at the high school. We're going to revisit again the locker rooms and the bathrooms, those changes. And then in February and March, the board at that time will, you know, sit down with Jim to find out where we're at, sit down with Wold and start prioritizing. So that's, that's what makes up the change orders. Okay?
I just want to make two points on that for the folks at home because these, these are big numbers. You look at the 106,000, you look at the 51,000, and those seem like really big numbers. And then you look at the original contract sum was $20,970,007. So, and in looking, I, I know Tim hit the highlights here, but just going through all of the different items on the punch list that make that up. Yes, there are additions, but there's also some pretty significant deductions in there as well. For instance, they changed the ceiling type, the, the ceiling tile type. That was a $27,000 savings. So it's not, it's not all just outflow. There's, they, they are looking for savings as we do this as well. So.
And there was contingency built in. There's a lot of this.
Yes, there was.
They expected there to be change orders.
Right. Yep. On, on any project of this size. Joe, you can speak to this probably better than anyone.
Especially a remodel, I guess.
Yeah. Yeah. So just in light of being good stewards of, of our taxpayers' money, we want to be, you know, very clear about that.
Yeah, I just did a quick, especially on the middle school one, the Corvo Constructors were at about 2.2% has been our change orders, which is in the range that is actually very low to date.
Yep. More work to go. I'm sure that this will not be the last that we, you know. Yep. All right. So getting us back to business here. Any more discussion on this item? Okay. I have a motion and a second. I'd like to call for a vote, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action item number five, I would like a motion and a second to approve the following change in assignment. We have one change in assignment. And it's, again, we typically don't go into names except when required by law. So the, the agenda is posted online for anyone that would like to peruse that. So we have just one, one change in assignment. I need a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action item number six, I will be asking for a motion and a second to approve changes to the pay equity review for the following positions here. And I'll read through these. So the first one is a addition of grounds worker custodian and corresponding position description classification, grade seven. Reinstate position and update administrative assistant, superintendent slash teaching and learning and corresponding position description classification, grade 11. The third one is a reinstate position and update accounting specialist and corresponding position description slash classification, grade nine. The fourth one is an update administrative assistant, buildings and grounds and corresponding position description classification, grade eight. The fifth one is an update coordinator of district services and corresponding position description slash classification, grade 14. And the sixth one is an update finance supervisor and corresponding position description slash classification, grade 13. So at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion and a second and then we can get into description. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. I think I said description. I meant discussion. Okay. So let's talk about these. Maybe we can give a little background on what this is all about.
Yeah. I'll start out with that. And then I know Kelsey wanted to share some comments too. Long winded, but there's a lot to, to say about this. Number one, pay equity review, the, the history of it. When I came here, the district had not been doing pay equity review. And so there was a time when Kim, Brian, I said, hey, we have to get classification. This is a requirement, et cetera. So around 2007, we consulted with an outside vendor and they did a market study of all hourly positions. Then they met with us and board members at the time. They were representatives on the, on the board at that time. And they showed where this group should be in this grade, this group should be in this grade, this grade, et cetera. Then the board members looked at, well, what did the market studies say? This group was maybe in grade seven, but the market study is saying that they should be placed in grade six. So we went through all of that back in 2007. We met with all the bargaining groups at that time. And around 2008, 2009, that's clear, that's when we started placing all the, the groups on that pay equity scale. And we've stayed with that. At that time also, I told the board that I wanted a review cycle. So the positions were reviewed every four years. So we, I have a copy of the review cycle here. But we took the positions and we grouped, that this group would be done this year, 25% more in another year, 25% more in another year, 25% more in another year. So at every four years, they would be reviewed. In between there, you can have jobs looked at if there's changes, major changes to duties, or if you're adding a new job, or if you're changing a job, et cetera. So anyway, that's a little bit about the pay equity review. Usually there has to be a substantial change, either whether it be in supervision, whether it be in budgeting in order typically to move a, a different, a different grade. So that's how the, the pay equity review cycle came. I met with the finance committee twice on this prior to, over the last three to four weeks, which is Peter, Joe and Lisa. And I think it ties into the fact that over the 17 years of me being here, I've led the district to be pretty fiscally conservative. And when you do that, you're downsizing a lot of jobs and sharing jobs. And this person's doing this job and this person's doing this job. And that definitely helps to build a fund balance of, you know, $14 million. But part of it too then is as superintendent, I have to make the decision on, a lot of people have heavy workloads that district wide. But where does the workload need to change? Where does it need to restructure, et cetera? There's no secret then. I don't think Jim Huberty minds me mentioning his name. The district, myself, has really burnt him out over the last decade. He's doing the job of three people. He used to be the lead at the high school. Then he became the director of facilities. Then we didn't replace the lead at the high school. Tony Casle left. We didn't replace the lead there. And so at what cost to him when he's working 60 hours a week, 24/7, and what levels of efficiency? So years of board know that when we hired the new director of facilities, that I said, we're probably going to have to add back something. And that something will still be coming. I met with Jim Huberty, I met with Dreah, I met with Cam to talk about what do you think that something should be? Should it be a lead that oversees the high school and the middle school? Should it be a, a lead at the high school, lead at the middle school? You know, what should it be? I want you two to, to come up with that. Or do you want to hire a, a maintenance specialist that just goes around and works on our HVAC only? Because that's where your high costs, well, that can cost you a lot of money if they're not operating well. Or if a valve, as Russ knows that, the valve freezes or whatever it might be, it's going to cost you up to $10,000 to, to repair some of that. So those are the discussions that I've had on the facility side. I showed you as board members that it's always tough to say, how is this district structured compared to this district? How is Hastings structured compared to Norfield or New Prague or Oatana, other schools our size? Because those schools also are doing the same things that we're doing. They're, they're moving positions to, to meet the, the needs of the people that they have. I've told you as a board that there's no district our size that you'll find that will have a Missy Williams, director of technology, oversees all testing, oversees Mars. That's just, that's just totally unheard of. But she does have that background and that skill set that she came from 3M. She does have that background. So having said that, I met with the finance committee. And I said that even positions in our district office, and when people mention the district office, the district office in my mind has several compartments. There's the special ed group of three. There's technology and there's teaching and learning, which almost are becoming intertwined. And they want, Missy and Jim Reichel spend a lot of time together. Because principals will go to them and say, do I go to Missy Williams for this? Cause it's technology, but it also impacts learning. So those two positions, it's great to have them next to each other because they, they are becoming intertwined. And then you have the business office, which is probably eight people. And then you have the superintendent's position there as, as well. And so I told the finance committee that as we get a retirement in the business office, and I won't be here to see that through, but as we get a retirement here in the next nine months, I, I definitely believe that some of that position will get restructured differently. And other people will be doing components of that position. And at the same time, I think then that the need that the district really has is an accounting specialist. And by hiring that accounting specialist, then that takes some of the workload off of a Jen's position. It takes some of the workload off of a Jimmy Berg's position. And it takes some of the workload off of a Cindy Westland. And then those positions can go in deeper to support other positions and to support the, the superintendent. I've shared that. I, you know, one of the things, then the next superintendent shouldn't spend as much time in the office that I've spent over the years. I, I go in and I retrieve a lot of the data. I, I collect a lot of the comparisons for principal negotiations. I do a lot of, I do a lot of the collection for teacher negotiations and all that. And you're going to want the soup not doing that. And that helps free up some of the, the time of those other individuals to do that. And for those other individuals to be meeting with, with principals, et cetera. To expand on that, we met with all the administrators today. We had administrative meeting. And one of the questions I asked them was, how did the training go this year? How did, you know, with Jen and Cindy, as we've trained on appropriate expenditures and we've trained other things. And the principals and administrative team said that they really liked it. They liked that face-to-face contact. They liked that discussion. And they would like to take it one next step now. And for, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jen, on what was said, but they said they'd like to take it one next step now where Jen and Cindy come out intermittently and meet with the three elementary principals and, and their secretaries. That Jen and Cindy come up to the high school and meet there and have that group discussion again. Because they shared, and we all know it, there's so many different gray areas. And even the statute is in gray in these areas. So to have that face-to-face discussion would be good. And as some new employees come in. So for example, Marsha Crandall is going to be a new secretary at JFK here on Halloween. So to get that discussion there. But they said, yeah. And I, and we talked again about, well, that's good to hear because I want the administrative team to be the main ones that comes to the business office. Teachers and, teachers should go to either their principal to ask questions, or they should go to, if they're at the high school, the department chair. Coaches should go to their AD. And then those, that's the system of how it, how it should work. And so we had a good discussion about that. So again, I think that accounting specialists can help with some of the, with some of that. The assistant to the director of teaching and learning, the director of technology, and to the superintendent, and to the Dave Hademan a little bit. I wouldn't say Dave Hademan probably as much. Because Dave did, he's without an administrative assistant right now. Think if you went to other districts, you would find that the director of technology, the director of teaching and learning would have a, an assistant to help. I do believe that by having that assistant for all those positions, it will work. Jen Reichel's just not been getting assistance for what we need for teaching and learning. She just, she just. She just, she just hasn't. Missy Williams, we were shifting things to Andrea Seleski. So during testing time, she was having to try and train Andrea Seleski, who's our facilities and maintenance. Buildings and grounds and Andrea was doing it. So, so that, so I'll get into some of these here in a little bit, but that ties into how Andrea came in, came in here. And I believe by doing that, by giving that assistance, then the rest of the office will function much better and be able to help out other positions district wide too and will be able to go much deeper as well. I think the administrative assistant will help with HR just a little, a little bit. I think that Hastings, and we talked about this at our administrative meeting today a little bit too. We, since I've been here, we do HR by committee. And I don't know if that's necessarily a great thing or not, but what I mean by that is, I like the fact that our principals, when they're done with interviewing, they're the ones that call back the interviewees and say, hey, you didn't, I'm sorry, you didn't get the job. And not an HR person. I like the fact that our principals are the ones that make the initial contact and say, hey, welcome to Hastings, I'll give you a tour. So that's, that's part of the committee. I believe one thing that would help our principals out would be, or Deanna, who's coordinator of district services, would have more time. She could help the principals go through all the applications and fine tune who they're looking for. She could help the superintendent when there's a principal hiring, go through the 50 applicants and say, hey, here are the 10 that the new superintendent should look at. That can help, help some of those positions. I shared that, for example, right now, whenever substitutes apply to the district, that Mike Johnson oversees, oversees all the substitutes for secondary, middle school and high school. Matt Esterby does it for elementary. Not a huge workload, but it takes hours. Well, that then could get shifted to Deanna's position, coordinator of service, to save them some time because we could shift some of her responsibilities to other people such as Andrea, such as the administrative assistant. We have this, and what's been happening is, and this happens not only in the business office world, it happens in the teachers' world, it happens in everybody's world. As technology keeps bringing more and more great things, but then somebody has to be responsible for it. So for the last three weeks, we've known about TransAct. TransAct is something that we paid for through our achievement integration. And we had a great, we sat in this room and we had a great training on it. It can give translation to any document in 28 different languages. The state of Minnesota has it free for about 18 of the languages, but who's going to do it? None of the administrators want to take that on. And when I say do it, I mean set up the training for secretaries, decide what we translate, et cetera. So I'm just, it, it's tough to write in job descriptions and everything of how I view this could specifically move forward until the board gives approval of saying, yes, let's move forward with this. So for example, just on TransAct, my thought would be, the administrative assistant would help do the training for the principals and the principal secretaries on how to use it, how to get it set up. The coordinator of district-wide services would meet then with the administrative assistant and say, which ones do we think we really need translated? Because there's a cost to everyone that you translate. And so that's that teamwork that I'm talking about. On the human resources side, I just got an email today from Jenny Berg to meet with her on my retirement. Am I going to stay on health insurance? Am I going to stay on dental insurance? And all those things, well, I consider that HR. She's, she's doing HR. Jen, I know, still does all salary worksheets for the district. That, that would be considered some, some HR. So I still believe that we do the HR by, by committee. So then as it ties back into this, at the same time that we're, so the first one doesn't really tie into the restructuring of the district office. That ties into our needs that we need more focused time on our grounds because we're not at times satisfied with our grounds, but it's also, we're very thin on staff. So that position would be a person who during the summer months would work on grounds or April to November. And then in the winter months would either be a substitute because we struggle at time to get custodians or would come into the middle school. Our middle school is definitely a site where we're short on custodial staff. So we turned that into the individual, the firm that does pay equity. They said that that position, instead of being a grade six, which would be your, I'll just say regular custodian and a grounds worker is grade eight, they said that that should be a grounds seven. So this isn't really a recommendation from, from me per se, it's coming from, from this firm. Reinstate the position of administrative assistant, grade 11. That's what it was back in the days, it was a grade 11 back when it was the position of administrative assistant. The accounting specialist, we used to have that position seven or eight years ago. And again, it was a grade nine back then, it would be a grade nine now. The administrative assistant for buildings and grounds, that's Andrea who I was talking about where we had shifted some of the testing to her. So part of the plan would be the testing would go to the administrative assistant to help out Missy Williams. And then we'd look to move the electronic door system and the surveillance cameras out of Deanna's current position to Andrea, which is in facilities, which makes sense. So we submitted that and the firm said, yep, I see all the changes, but her position was a grade eight. I believe it still should be a, a grade eight. Then the coordinator of district services, Deanna's position was a grade 13. But one of the changes then would be for Deanna to supervise the copy center, which is getting to be a very high-tech, high-end. When it, when it breaks down, you need to know technology very well and to help our office staff with that. And because of that supervision of that, that went from 13 to 14. And then the finance supervision position, that's what Cindy Westland, that's her position. If we're small enough, I think you know who that is. Because the supervision of that would come out, we submitted hers and the gentleman in the firm said that, no, that was a grade 13, it would still be a grade 13. So there, I know that was a very applying story and I hope that I didn't put you to sleep, but I wanted to tell you all the history and give you some of the discussion that I had with the finance committee over two, over two meetings and condensed it into a 20 minute. So there.
And I handed out the review cycle sheet here that has not only the 68 different classifications divided amongst the four, the four different years because it's a every four-year review cycle or as needed or if we're doing a new hire. But it also has the history of when it was reviewed and when, when the board approved it going back to September of 2009.
And Jen and I did tell the firm that we would like him to do a market study again. Probably we should, the district should be doing a market study about every six years. You know that I've done the market study this past spring. I came back to you as a board and I told you that I believe that we needed to give the hourly positions a higher percentage from what I saw. But I'm, I'm not an expert in, in looking at all that, but I told you that from what I saw, our pay equity grade has fallen a little bit in the hourly positions and that not only should we give it a higher percentage than what we gave the, the teachers and the principals, but we should also eliminate a step each year to make the pay more attractive.
Like the entry step?
With the entry step.
Yeah, to make the initial.
Now, you might say, well, now Tim, that we're doing the market study, we should maybe wait till that market study comes back. I don't think the market study is going to change what I saw because it was, it was pretty obvious. But anyway, I just wanted to let you know that.
And you'd expect that market study to be like a month, four to six weeks or something like that, or is that?
Three to four weeks. Yeah. So anyway, I'll, I'll stop and I know Kelsey wanted to share a few things too.
Oh, well, I do have a couple of questions, you know, since the agenda came out and this came up on the agenda, I've had a lot of people contacting me. So can you talk a little bit about what happens when someone's pay equity review comes in and puts them at a higher number, but why they may be given a lower number?
Yep, good question. The PSAs actually back in, and you've got to remember, this is 11 or 12 years ago, so I'm trying to jog my, my memory and Kim did more work with it. But the PSAs were one example, they came in at, at grade, that the firm came in at grade seven. But the market study at that time showed that other PSAs in the 40-mile radius weren't getting paid at what our grade seven was at. So at that time, we, there were board members on that committee as well. We looked at that and the board placed them in grade six at that time. The, the reverse of that also happened back in 2007. Because it's an individualized position, I won't, but it came back that a person was supposed to be, according to the grading, grade 12. But the market study showed that the annual salary for that person was about 10 grand below what he or she was making. So the board, instead of grade 12, moved that person to grade 13. Now, the board, the board at that time didn't have to do either one. They could have left them in grade seven. So yeah, that's how, that's how it worked.
Well, so then I guess my follow-up with that would be, so if we have, so let's use the PSAs for example and having their review come in at a seven. And then we say that their pay equity with the market study would put them at a six on our pay scale in order to keep them equitable with other PSAs. But if there are other positions in our district that say are rated a seven based on the workload, are we now out of equity for the workload and the pay between two different positions in our district? Does that make sense? So if there's another position in the district that's rated at a seven and gets paid at a seven because their workload matches the seven and we're only paying the PSAs a six, are they doing the same amount of work as a different position in the district but getting paid less? And so are they out of equity within our own district?
I, I, I think I understand what you're saying. They're supposed to be seven according to what, the functions of their job or the responsibilities of their job, or we move them to six, so now are we out of equity?
Yeah.
I, quite honestly, I don't know the, the answer on that, but I know that the firm that we go with, we, we tell them what we're doing, so I could follow up with that.
Yeah, I think that would be good because, I mean, I think it's important, it's important to keep them equitable with other PSAs in the area, but it's also important to keep them equitable with positions in the district that have similar workloads, that they're getting paid equitably within the district.
Yeah, I got the, yeah, I understand it. I'm guessing that it's going to be okay because their firm is the one that reviews it, but I'll still follow up with him.
Okay. And then, you know, I've had a lot of people contacting me over the past couple of months and some of the things that they're, they're talking about with, where they could use more support in the district office. And that would be, one, getting more support on appropriate expenditures when there's questions. They're not feeling like they're necessarily getting the support that they need from the district office. And then another one is having a designated HR person in the case of staff issues, staff complaints, that there's someone that they feel comfortable reaching out to and they're not feeling like they have that. And so if we're talking about adding two new positions to the district office, I think it's important to find a balance between where the district office is seeing gaps and where the district office would like help filling that in and also where staff is seeing gaps in the district office and where staff needs more help with the district office. And so trying to find a balance with that. And if we're adding two new positions, I would really like to make sure that the needs of staff that are being communicated to board members are also being taken care of with the addition of two new staff members.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. I, I think part of that for me, and because we're on TV, but pardon me for, would be to ask you some point off of TV, like what category of staff, I don't need to know names, but what category of staff that, that is, so I could better understand how I could help to make sure that clarification of who they go to and who they feel comfortable going to could happen with these new roles, so.
Yeah, and so I would hope that this kind of covers it, but without knowing for sure or reading the administrative assistant description, I'm not seeing really much written about HR or that sort of support. And so I'm not sure that the way that it's written is meeting all of the needs that we're seeing.
I'm confused by the first part because I, I'm hearing a discrepancy here. So what I heard is that you were getting comments that people are contacting, I think your first point was people were contacting, or people were not getting the support that they needed around appropriate expenditures, right? By contacting the district office. But then I just heard from Tim that he just met with all the people that should be meeting with the district office about appropriate expenditures. And it sounded like they all were feeling supportive.
Well, it sounds like, from what I heard from Tim, that they feel like the direction we're moving in is going to be supportive. That not that we're there yet, but that they would like those personal meetings with Jen moving forward. And so I think if the accounting specialist is going to help that happen, then that is bringing that support here.
Okay.
I'm more worried about the HR support.
Yeah, the administrative assistant isn't going to be the HR person. They're definitely going to help with some of those HR duties and help like do more of them, so. But it will still be, and I don't think Hastings can ever get away from this by having one HR person because it's still going to take Jenny Berg to meet with people when they're looking to retire and those types of things. It still takes this committee discussion, even if you had, I'll just say, let's say Scott was our, our HR. It still would work kind of like how it works right now. So when, I'll just use a snow day as an example. When we have a snow day, we have all these different contracts and groups of people of, well, this custodian showed up for three hours, kids campus showed up, this group didn't have to show up. The nighttime custo, you know, how do you handle all these contracts? So typically what happens now, and I believe will continue to happen, is that Deanna then meets with Jen, Deanna meets with Cindy Westland and they talk through all those moving parts and contracts. And then they come to me after they've talked it all through and said, this happened, this happened, this happened. We think, Tim, that this should happen. I think that even if the district had a HR person, that person would have to do those same types of discussions. So yeah, I still think that Hastings will still have some of those HR by committee, even if you did hire a full-time HR. But you're right, the administrative assistant isn't going to be the HR guru, but definitely will help out. We don't even have an employee handbook right now. And again, it's because we're just, you know, saturated with other things. So I think that, that would allow Deanna's position to start working on the employee handbook with principals. And then the administrative assistant could get handed off to, and the administrative assistant could then start working on the, on the handbook. So that's how I think the HR is going to get, get helped. I think part of your question is if some people don't have a comfort level of going to certain people for certain things, how can we clarify that for, I actually think the administrative assistant will help that. Because now you have three or four people in your office that you can, you can go to Jen, you can go to the superintendent, you can go to the coordinator of services, you can go to the administrative assistant. You should have somebody that you could come and mention your issue or concern to.
I think those comments kind of underscore the need for additional staff because it doesn't sound like we're meeting the needs of everyone in the district right now. So you made a comment about wanting the principals and the leadership to take more accountability for some of the financial decision-making. And, but they need more of Jen's time to do that. So bringing somebody in to do that will allow Jen to be more engaged with that group, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
And I, and I think, yeah, definitely, it was very evident today. And for Jen, it's not good news, or Cindy Westland, because the, the feedback was back, you can't create a video on some of this because we, we've started to go into like a video training. We can't do that because it's the, the discussion of this. We can't do that because it's the, the discussion of this weird situation happened. Now what do you think? Can it be able to have that dialogue? Yeah, so definitely, the accounting specialist will, you know, help free up some of that time. I've shared with you as a board too, that over the next year to fourteen months, there's going to be a tremendous time suck taken away from Deanna's position and Jen's. Just naturally. Because the interim soup's going to come here and they're going to meet with me at some point in December and I'll go through as much as I can. And I'll give you the list of everything that I'm going to go through with them. And then after I leave, for them to gain a lot of knowledge on the district, the two historians are Deanna and Jen. So the interim soup's going to go sit in Deanna's office and talk for a half an hour, what do you do on a snow day, what do you do on this day, you know, all this. And she's not going to be able to do her work during that time. So that's short-term, so I don't always do a restructuring just for short-term. I put a lot of time into thinking about this and yeah, would have I loved to have this when I was superintendent here? Probably. Because I could have been out and about more in the schools and that was one of my weaknesses. I wasn't, I wasn't able to because I hardly ever do PowerPoints at board meetings anymore because part of it, I know if I give it to Deanna, she'll do it and she'll be here till seven at night, so. You know, I, I hear what you're saying, Kelsey, and I, I get that about, you know, who to go to and a comfort level for that. Like, I don't have any guarantees on that, but I think that position will help.
Right, so-
Okay, I was just going to jump off of, and we can look back, but the point that you made about to PowerPoints at, at board meetings or e-news out to parents or updates on the Facebook. Because what I've been hearing is I've been out Dornakian and, and at the different forums as a candidate has been about increased communication to the community about what's happening. And and that's a piece that we just have had insufficient staff to address. And so while our, the director of services, district ser-, coordinator of district services has that in their, in their job description, it's, it hasn't been a highest priority. And I feel like we need to set ourselves up for success on that going forward. So that means moving some things probably to the administrative assistant and then, and then building towards a coordinated communication practice, both about regular e-news, having built PowerPoint or some unnamed brand presentation that, I mean, that becomes a historical record and is accessible both to us as board members to look back on and to the community and say, oh, here's a reference document that supports these minutes. And I I feel like we need to be stronger in that and that this will help us address it.
I think we've all been kind of seeing symptoms over the last couple of years of either people working lots of overtime in the district office or of certain things not being gotten to. So before you ever came to us with this, I think we already had observed that some changes needed to be made. So I think for the most part, when we began talking about it, it was easy for me to understand what you were talking about.
And I'm not downplaying that we have many employees in the district that are working extremely, I mean, if I had to go back and be a teacher right now compared to when I taught back in nineteen eighty-seven, I'd be overloaded right now because they do so much more than I do. So I get that too. But I think in order for the district to go deeper, to do a better job, we, we say that there's these two positions, but I really believe that nine months from now, it'll really only be that you've added one posi-
Yeah.
Good choice.
That you've really only added one position. And again, I think we're going to, principals have talked to me for two years that we do not do a good job of onboarding new employees. And that they need help with that. And, and they've met, they've come up with a plan, but again, for somebody to be able to do it. You know, I, I shared with you as a board, these last three weeks with the elections, Deanna does just a ton on elections. So it's tough to do anything else with Facebook. And I'm not saying that she can't do it, but there's just a ton going on with elections. And she's the only one in the district that we have trained right now. So we're definitely going to then change some of that and transition some of that to the assistant too. So that they can both work on it. And if one of them would get sick, we would make sure that we still had the election, so.
Yeah. No, so just reiterating the looking at the pay equity within the district, I think. I'm not saying we, we don't need these, but I would also say that as we're looking at reinstating positions we once took away because we're kind of seeing this effect build up. And the toll that's taking on staff and their satisfaction with working in the district, I think we may need to be reevaluating other positions that we have removed. I know I would like to check in on how the high school is doing with the assistant principal removal and how that's impacting, if we're already seeing an impact and things like that. Because I do think that through the years, we've started seeing things add up and I would like to not see that continue.
Very good. I guess, you know, two thousand nine is when you started out with the pay equity program and reviews, right?
I think, I think two thousand eight, two thousand nine.
Somewhere in there.
Is board approved in two thousand nine?
So it's an ongoing process and this is just a normal part of the review and the documentation of, okay, how job descriptions have evolved, where there should be changes. And those normal things come about on a certain three-year term or something like that.
Every four years.
Four years.
This isn't normal. Yeah, this-
This is a new-
Yeah, this, this-
That's, that's what my question is getting to.
Yeah, this is a new organization.
No.
But in, in looking at it along through the process, you know, there's no, what I've been able to see, there's no set guideline or idea how a district office is set up and what works and what doesn't work and who has job responsibilities and what are they? And it evolves as a superintendent and board look at those items and say, okay, we need adjustments here, but we don't need adjustments here. We need to redesignate work from this area to this area. It always evolves. And I guess that's what I'm trying to get across to folks is-
Yeah, you're right.
This, this is a ongoing process and it evolves and, and, you know, through your tenure, it's changed how many times. And moving forward, when we have a permanent new superintendent, it may evolve again to something else.
Correct.
It, it's just an ongoing process. And I think that for folks at home watching on TV need to understand that, that, because that's the biggest question I've been asked, is how's this coming about? I said, this is, is an ongoing process that has been in place for a number of years.
Yeah, if, if Missy Williams would leave here today, you would, we would not be structured like we're in the business office. There are, there's hardly anybody that has her skill set that used to work in three M, where she used to go out and advise companies on infrastructure for technology. And the background that she has on data and testing and my, she just-
Right.
You'd have to probably hire a full-time technology director and/or take Andy Lizer and he'd be your half-time coordinator and half, I mean, so you would then restructure according to your personnel. And I think businesses do that as well, as they-
Yes.
As they get different people in with different skill sets. But so as I say, as things have come on and come into the system, we've just given them to people. Electronic doors, here, Deanna, you learn it. Surveillance cameras, here, Deanna, you learn it. Now we've got this transact. I said today to the administrators, anybody want this?
But it's a valuable, very valuable.
Oh, we all, oh, we all-
We want the service. Now he's after-
Yeah, we all, we all want it, but we've got Matt Esterby doing Title One Coordinator as an elementary principal and doing summer school. So I mean, he's like, I don't want that. So again, I, I don't want to make it easier for the person who replaces me, but this definitely will improve it for them. It will improve it for students, it will improve it for principals. Because we're going to be able to, to do more. And I told you, cost-wise, a year from now, I believe it will be the addition of an administrative assistant, which we were going to have to do anyway to help out Jen Reinkle and to help out Missy. So part of that cost was coming to us. Director of Teaching and Learning has just exploded the responsibilities since I've become a superintendent. And then we throw in achievement and integration to her lap. And then we fill out, throw in Native American Indian and, and those other things, and they just keep coming and coming. And so again, the district was going to have to hire an administrative assistant for that position.
So I would like to continue working with you then to figure out the situation to give staff the HR support that they need.
Yep, yep, thank you. All right, that was a lot of discussion. Anything further?
Call a point.
All right, hearing nothing, I will call, I have a motion, I have a second. I will call for a vote at this time. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action item number seven. I'll be asking for a motion and a second to approve six leaves. And again, we don't read these off. It is listed. If anyone is interested, they can go out and look at the school board agenda that is posted on the school website.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action item number eight, a motion to accept the resignations of two individuals. I need a motion and a second, please.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Besides a thank you to them for their service. Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action item number nine. Be asking for a motion and a second to approve the employment of four individuals.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on these? And again, the names are listed in the agenda. Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number eight is our other business and we have here the twenty-twenty school board calendar draft. It's just for, for review. I believe that this was posted in our Dropbox. If, if we don't have hard copies of it here tonight, we're not acting on it tonight. It's simply the first and third Wednesdays, was it, Deanna?
Second and fourth.
Second and fourth, thank you. Like I said, the second and fourth. Second and fourth Wednesday, Wednesdays of the month, projected out through twenty-twenty. So you can take a look at that. It's draft only. We will act upon it at our organizational meeting, which I believe is July, January eighth. Oh, I got that one right. Excellent. Uh, January eighth, when we do our organizational meeting, we'll go through the calendar and approve it for next year. So the only one that is firm is the organizational meeting at that, at that point. All right. Upcoming meetings, days and dates here. So we have a whole bunch of them. And for folks that are viewing this at home or, or at a later date, some of the special board meetings that I'm talking about here are, came out of our process for our interim superintendent selection, negotiation, hiring, et cetera. So in order to meet the timelines that we are working with MSBA on, we needed to act in this way. We simply could not get everything done that we needed to get done at either a work session or a regular board meeting. So we did have a couple of things that we could, that we could lump in there. So as I read these off, when you hear the special board meeting, that's what those are for. Again, this information is available on the school website. We've created a new page specific to all of the interim superintendent, the, the process, the tasks, the dates, the meetings, the places, the times, et cetera, so. So Tuesday, November five, seven AM to eight PM. It's a big day, school district, uh, school district election. So please vote. Uh, Wednesday, November sixth, at six PM is our work session. And that will be a long one. And is that here or is that- I'm gonna, yeah, I'm just going to keep it here. Okay. So that's here in the district office. Wednesday, November thirteenth is one of those special board meetings I was talking about that will be at six PM. And these are all open meetings, so the community is welcome to attend. Tuesday, November nineteenth at nine AM, this is a special board meeting. Wednesday, November twentieth at six PM, this is a regular board meeting. I want to back up to that, to the previous one, actually, the nine AM. That is one where the reason we're having it at nine in the morning is that we need to be contacting some of our, our candidates, or I think that might be the interview one.
I think that's the interview.
Where we're interviewing candidates. So obviously, we're not going to do that in the evening. So that's why that is an odd time. Wednesday, November twentieth is our regular televised board meeting. Thursday, November twenty-first, again, this one is at nine AM. This is our administrative committee. And this is where the administrative committee will be meeting to, we will have already selected our top candidate for the interim position. And this is where we will be contacting that candidate and going through contract negotiations, et cetera, et cetera, with them. So that, that's why that is at the time that it's at. And then Monday, November twenty-fifth at six thirty PM, and the reason it's at six thirty instead of six is that we had a few board members that had conflicts at six PM, so we were trying to, to work around that as best we could. That is our special board meeting where we will actually be approving the hire of the interim super, superintendent. So at that point, you know, we will have a recommendation from the administrative committee coming forward on the contract terms. We will have already known going into the administrative committee meeting who our top candidate is. So hopefully, if everything works out with that top candidate, we would be have, have just one agenda item where we are approving the hire of that interim superintendent. So all of this has to do with the interim superintendent that I've talked about. This is not for the permanent hire. That will be a separate process. We will communicate much the same way with the community via our webpage, keeping people up to date as to where things are at. And as always, feel free to contact any board member and, and we can certainly keep you up to date as well. All right, at this point, I would like a motion and a second to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.